Recalling.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 12, 2022, meeting of the Dayton Public Library Board of Trustees. Just a reminder, this meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting, is being recorded on Zoom. Members of the trustees and the library director are present in the room. Others may be joined by Zoom. And by nature of being in Zoom, it is being recorded as well. And with that, meeting to order trustees and welcome Anne as our newest elected trustee. And we'll start with taking a roll up. So we can start with. Oh, just a reminder, because this is a hybrid virtual meeting, all votes will require voice vote. So I'm Ronald Potter, Chair of the Library Trustees.
Reader Rujia trustee, Anne Lightson trustee.
Justin Tavarez, library director.
First item before we get into our agenda, we learned of the passing of Erin Ferry, who was a volunteer for the Dayton Public Library, among her many other contributions to the town of Dayton. And one second moment silence and remember. You have any comments about Erin? Justin?
I just enjoyed having her with us for as long as she was with us.
She was one of my students. I always enjoyed them.
She took a break to go back to school, take some more classes. She would always visit the library when we were at Lincoln Village. And you're just gonna miss her.
Okay, first item of business are the March 3 and April 7 minutes to be approved. I have a motion to approve those minutes.
Reader Rujia, I make a motion that we accept the minutes for the March 3 and the April 7.
Stepping out as Chair on second that motion. It's not all votes we want to participate since she wasn't present for these meetings. So we have a second, any discussion? Any questions, comments, additions, corrections? Okay, you're in on favor. Ronald Connor, I.
Reader Rujia, I.
Job as always, Justin. Thank you. Now, we are recommending we go into executive session. We have a motion, go into executive session.
Reader Rujia, I make a motion that we go into executive session. Under Massachusetts General Laws 30A, Section 21A 6, consider the purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, potential real property acquisition for library operations.
Ronald Connor, Chair, have determined that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body. Oh, need a second.
Can I say? Yeah, I second.
Okay. On my favor of going into executive session, I took that a little bit out of order. So let's go back. If we need the second first and then for me to make the determination. So we have a second of the motion. As Chair, I've determined that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body. Now we can vote unless there's any discussion in motion. And take vote. Ronald Connor, I.
Reader Rujia, I.
Anne Lightson, I.
Okay, return to open session at 6:47 PM. Okay, all business fiscal year 23 budget update from the Selectmen's Meeting, April 15 and Finance Committee.
I, because we discussed this in email, I needed to put it on an agenda. So we had the Selectmen's Meeting, April 13th, where they went over the budget. And it passed. And Finance Committee, we had the meeting on April 28th. And I don't think they voted on it for our recommendation. I don't know when they did that, but they seemed to be okay with the explanations we had and what we represented. So I haven't heard anything else. I don't know when the Finance Committee is recommendation. I know Mike wanted to have a meeting like he did in the fall that explained the warrant ahead of time. So I accept we would learn.
And just for Anne's benefit, typically, these are meetings with the department heads. Most departments have department heads. This is a department that also has a governing body, but we trust most of this to Justin. We come, she needs us. So that's great job. She knows how it all works. So she needs us for that or that. Anyway, just so you know, I mean, it's kind of like department heads are asked to do this and then we can support. How should we?
Another item I put in the email, that is June 4. And we've already, I, Dave Marvath has already asked to really open the library that day. I know township opens around noon, but they start setting up around 10:00 and apparently it's a very crowded Dayton Town Hall campus. So even with, and the staff are all like, yeah, there's no one will be able to even get in to the library to use it. And I thought, well, maybe we could open the modular, but they even said that that would be to handle the parking. Lori is planning on setting up a table there for a few hours on Saturday to hand out the summary pamphlets and stuff. She says she doesn't need help, but so I guess it's just asking about or making an official vote if the library should open for that. Yeah, Saturday. And because of that, we're aiming to be open on Memorial Day weekend because the next weekend.
Oh, I see. Right.
Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah.
Closed Memorial Day weekend, so that, because I was.
Even though we're open in the summer.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the alternative would be open that Friday.
I, I had thought of it. I, we wouldn't be able to have both places because I'm the only staff person working, but I also think that would be confusing for the public. I'm willing to do it if the board, but I think they set up two.
Yeah.
Things going on.
No, the whole week is gonna be, they're setting up the concession stands and rides and everything. So right, doesn't that usually happen like one day before?
They start, I know, I remember like some of the amusements start coming in earlier at the week, but I don't, I don't know how, because you've never been here.
Right, unless I'm starting to sort of raise the question, what it's, it's going to be, the parking is going to be limited over there because.
I mean, I can probably, I was planning on working that Friday. I can probably park behind.
The modular.
The modular. And you know, if I'm there and people come in, I usually try to help them.
No, I don't think it's necessarily be open on Friday. I was just asking if you considered that.
Yeah.
So it's not work on Saturday.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I can throw it out there.
Probably just leave well enough alone. It's, it's good for the patrons to, I think, just to explain this the typical circumstance.
Yeah.
That's the other thing is most people will be thinking it's closed on Memorial Day anyway. So.
That's true.
Surprised, but again.
I would expect it to be really quiet.
Yeah. Well, if, I think being open that weekend in order to reason that to let people know that it was following Saturday. Okay, sounds good. Sounds like a plan. Do we need to vote on that?
I think just.
Yeah, okay. So I have a motion to approve closing the library on Friday, Saturday, June 4th. Because of the voucher festival and having the library be open on Saturday, May 20.
30.
28, Saturday. So.
I, I make a motion that the library closed on June 4 because of the township weekend and being open on Saturday, the 28th of May.
Second.
Reader Rujia, I second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Whoa, Ronald Connor, I.
Reader Rujia, I.
Anne Lightson, I.
Update on teen program on the goal 23.
That was a program that the children's room, this room was shut down a little early so that Lori could have a program over at Old Town Mall. And I just wanted to follow up. She was pretty excited because 12 people total came. And five of them were actually teens. So she was really excited because
she lost someone when she was doing the clock. I have some teenage boys that came.
I think she might have, yeah, yeah. And she did with the Choose Your Own Adventure Book Club that she had on Fridays. So she was able to pull some of those people good. She's hoping to allow that to maybe like a junior friend or teen advisory board to help us. And she certainly, she wants their input on planning any future programs. So it's a positive job.
I was there and they're five of the nicest teen boys. Really nice kids.
Yeah.
And kids have been, they have been involved with the library since they were small.
Yeah.
So they're, they're, they are real potentials for further activities with teens.
Yeah. We have our action plan to create a teen ambassador, youth ambassador program. Sounds like we may have some candidates right there.
Yeah. Definitely. Way to be approached. Stop the news.
They're probably watching this now and realize that we've got their names.
Yeah.
All right. Thank, action plan.
I cobbled together an action plan based on our discussions of the our proposed activities from the strategic plan. I included the fiscal year 22 activities and the ones we decided to go 23. And it's adjusted at the, as I said before, some of the items on our strategic plan are in our control. So we are, you know, everything has been adjusted, but that is my, I guess, draft for your review. And I don't know if you're ready to look. I don't know. I can't remember if I sent it to you ahead of time. But we can start that table about till.
Well, this is, I think Ron and I were involved, but Anne hasn't seen it. So we should probably table.
Okay. So that's. Regarding the five hotspots we got from the MBLC. And we'll see funding is ending on September 30. We just don't have the grant that they've got federal grant money as well in order to provide this program for us. We do have the option to continue offering those hotspots. And we have the option to look at different carriers and different to see if we can switch service or whatever. They are T-Mobile hotspots. And that's where our subscription is currently. I plan on doing the homework, but T-Mobile seems to have a very good coverage now for our area. And for Massachusetts, which is why they, which might be T-Mobile. So that is something to consider. They did say going forward with state aid, the the amount that we pay toward our subscriber count. Are you, the plans that we pay in order to provide the internet access for people is now going to be allowed to be used as a collection. I know it wasn't before. It was seen as a utility. So I think that's the good news, especially with the setup that we're in, where we limited space, but this is a real asset to be able to provide for the community. So that's, I would think it makes sense to keep knowing to, you know, keep doing what we're doing. We're just adding on to your level. Most hotspots are less more user friendly than what's now. Me, you know, the previous iterations of them. And I'm happy to report this week, we learned that our laptops are finally ready to go. So I can order them. Everything's been approved. I got the, I knew they were intending to do it. I was just like waiting and waiting for the official approval. I just, I'm just gonna see how to pay because it's a reimbursement program. So I'm gonna get clarification on if we should pay out of our state aid and have that reimbursement go there since it's so close to the physical year. That's my only concern now with the time and things. And I guess there's still technology lags in getting equipment. So I just thought I would let you know, but I'll follow up and let you know. If that's okay to use state aid.
Wow, thank you. Statistics. It's hard to differentiate.
I know. Yeah. Yes. So we keep doing better. Our book green line.
Oh, of course it was. I can see 2020 and it's like.
Flashback.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
Fine. The library in transition. So there are all. Any questions or comments on the statistics? How are we doing on the online?
Um, we still do okay. Our biggest news is with overdrive. That's the most well known. Canopy is getting some news.
Hoopla.
Hoopla is in their big white free goal. It's popular. It's a report. It's a study. I was kind of looking at everything. I have added one. That's boy, I can't remember the name of it, but it's basically an exercise video that you can get with overdrive. So they offer all kinds. You can either take a live, you can do it live, or you can have a recorded video to exercise it. So I just have to, I'm just looking for ways to provide resources that aren't too let stress on physical collection. So we get the most bang for our buck for physical resources and digital resources given our speech constraints.
Are you, how do you interpret the canopy data? It seems to have peaked and gone down.
Well, it's those who visit. So that's not the actual, I don't know that that's actual, I'm gonna sit down and make the effort to watch it. Watch the video or I am not sure how best to count that, but most of the, for the purposes of this report, these are sessions that someone is, is recording logging into it for like the state proceeding we work for. There, they define the count as someone has looked at an article or downloaded the video or, so in the cases of like the new, I don't even know if I'm consistent, downloaded or checkouts if we have the checkout. Include that with overdrive. So I can switch to Canopy for the checkout.
No, it's okay. I like looking at the number and trying to draw conclusions. It was, it was relatively new in December and December and January, winter months where, so.
That's true. The programs.
I like this.
And they become teens.
Any other questions?
No questions? Okay, thank you, Justin. They roll bills.
I do have people on bills. Later in the agenda, we'll get Anne authorized for signature.
Oh, I don't have.
Let's do it. No, that's, I just have to find one. So basically, the tables the bills are materials. There's a couple of T-Mobile bills that I, I don't know what happened in June. But I did a reconciliation with T-Mobile and saw that we owed it. And then there was one in September and I assumed that got lost in a month. So where, you know, as we get close to the fiscal year, we need to work on that. Those items.
So the, and there's a cover sheet.
Okay.
The cover sheet is signed and then the individual time sheets.
Okay.
And Justin has everything X star.
Of course he does.
Employees time sheet, design each one and that's.
She does everything to be significant.
That's right.
Yeah.
It's very helpful.
Well, I used to be able to sign mass modification back. So I was.
Question about the bills because they started last week. They were lost books.
Yes.
Probably seen it.
We had a situation where a teacher had lost books that she had for the classroom. Only one of them was ours and the PTO paid a check to cover the cost, the replacement cost of those books so she could use her car. But because it was a check, it goes into our fines account. We have a revolving account for fines and lost books. We're still obligated to pay the owning libraries, the replacement fees. So I'm working with the accountant at the time counter. I, we have the invoices for that and that checks issued more. That's.
Yeah. Yeah. I haven't seen that before. Sometimes more often than not, my wife comes and picks it up and brings it to the outside side because I, I probably have something to work on. So sometimes I get a little teed off something. Or my place to go and do that. So.
Sometimes I get a call.
But that, that was something different.
Yeah, yeah. So we're, we're just keeping everything.
Keeping everything local.
You don't have to sign every page.
Exes.
Yeah. Because that's just.
Okay. July 22, February 22.
That's the Saturday of the July 4 weekend, which is a Monday, hands on a Monday this year. I didn't know what you thought. If it would be worth it to be open, that's another like lost.
Oh, would it?
Yeah.
Normally we would, but this is the first, it's not really the first summer we open, but it's the first summer that we're here. I didn't know how you felt about that particular weekend. We, we can do it if you like. Particular weekend. We can do it if you like.
Well, since you haven't been open this summer and it's a long weekend, a lot of people. I would say. Books.
Yeah.
Same too.
I just. And that, you know, I'll be around. I expect to be around Friday.
Right. Of course, June 19 is a. And that's being extended into Monday.
That's true.
So that's a new.
Well, the. It's a federal holiday, but because we follow the town hall. The library staff are part of that. So when we're open, when they're open or we close, we have to see. Can't follow the. And I guess last night they signed some memorandums of understanding for the. The marketing units that did not have that provision.
So he observed on Monday the 20th.
Yes, yeah. And the other reason why these dates are special is because no one's open. Saturday. We are special. So I don't know.
But July 2nd.
Yeah.
I make a motion that during the holiday weekend. We close July 2nd, 2022. And Mike said I second the motion.
Okay, with a motion that's been seconded, any further discussion? Okay, we'll vote. On favor, Ronald Connor, I.
Reader, Rujia, I. And Mike said I.
Replacement.
We had a laptop. So we have to. I'm just letting you know.
Okay.
Um, that. I don't know. We have most of the money, I think, from. In the replacement. But. At this point, at this point, you might need to. Add a professional and technical line or see.
So was it a hard drive failure and then something on the hard drive we're concerned about or just?
Um, it was my computer. It's five years old. And I forgot what I was doing. I walked away from it. And it wouldn't, it just wouldn't turn on. So they thought it was like sales, you know, pieces of important. He thought it was a power. We were going to try to check the battery, but we couldn't. He thought with the age of it, it might just.
So is there a high drive on there to want to recover? Or nothing confidential on there or? Pull up the hard drive.
Going to try to help me recover mainly recordings of our meetings. There's one meeting that I may have seen posting to our YouTube channel. I'd like to be able to recover that if it's possible. Most of the items I. Sales has been our Google suite. We've been using Google Suite for a long time. We use it for email. We have all the cloud. My locks. Sales. So most everything is okay. It's just a lot of like. Pictures.
Yeah, it's fun to ask you if it's power thing, the hard drive might be fine.
Yeah.
And then you can. Pull up the hard drive.
Yeah.
And put it in an enclosure and you still have the hard drive with everything on it.
He's going to see what. Okay. But.
You got you got tech support.
Yeah. But if he is unable to. The only thing that I stood up.
Update the payment authorization.
So. With the change in or. Change of. Who is allowed to pay well. Library. Everyone needs to sign.
You sign just here under.
Yeah. Thank you.
Special mutations.
Um, so I guess if. You decided that only one of you would do payroll. Or if I think for one of the accounts we had, we needed two signatures, like if we wanted to signature. Or if for items over a certain amount, we want two signatures. So that's sometimes, well, yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, if that's something you can do.
Okay. Not a place where I say that I served on the on the board for.
No.
Special.
And it's been one dark. Bring the news to. Yep. We keep together.
All right, year-end transfer.
Um, given our reliance on staffing this location. But we didn't anticipate that during last year's budgeting cycle that we would. No utilizing places staffing. And so we're. I'm proposing that we transfer $1,700 from the expenses line lines. To put into her salary line so that we can keep her going through that this fiscal year. Um, my. When I originally put this together, I was thinking $1,000 from professional and technical. 600 from travel because we haven't really gone anywhere and. Deuces I usually. Yeah, reimbursed for professional associations, but I'll. That's 100. So the 1,600. About 1,700. And this. It made sense to have you approve it if you agree. The Board of Selectmen have to approve it and the Finance Committee have to approve it. And they can only be done between May 1st and July 5th. To cover this. Sure. But I saw it coming in late March. And asked Mike if he could do that. This is. So. Now, if you have any questions. I am hoping this won't happen again because hoping that they're able to get that 15 hours a week to cover. What she's actually.
Do you need a motion?
I would like. Yeah.
Right. We have a motion to approve the year-end transfer as just described by Justin.
So can I sum up?
Sure, absolutely. You have a second?
My second.
Any further discussion? Would to vote Ronald Connor, I.
Reader, Rujia, I. And Mike said I.
If motion passes.
Thank you.
Massachusetts Library Association Conference.
We have two staff people attending. It is. May 23rd and May 24th. Twenty-two day conference this year. Phyllis is attending on Monday. I'm going.
Where is it?
It's in Hyland. We're running out of places that can accommodate. The size of the conference that are completely. Um, I'm just asking for, I guess, reimbursement for the. For the intent. So Phyllis is Monday. Phyllis is not a member of the. It's $235. My two days is to.
To the registration.
Yeah. Um, there. Um, and there's I expect if. There's money in professional and technical. Needs that, but otherwise.
So it's just you and Phyllis.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the others are always. Necessarily. Going to conference now. It's harder for us to send them.
So it's travel, personal mileage that's covered elsewhere in the budget.
Well, I just transferred it out. So we can probably.
Okay, I just want to make sure everything's covered. It's not me for an overnight state for you.
Um, I am.
Someone.
That's who I know.
Yeah. That's why not.
Because it's conference.
Yeah. I don't know that we have any requirements like a, you know, minimum travel distance, but. It's it's part of the experience either. It must have. Something that first evening programs things that are important. There's just a networking that happens with others and.
Same way.
Uh, I see a legitimate reason for. Budget to pay for that overnight expense unless there's some town. Restriction on that that I.
I don't know what's happening. I know they're being cautious, but with this. I mean, that's for your discretion.
Yeah. An exercise, our discretion and not if you're saying if you had planned to sail overnight and paying out of pocket, there's no need to do that.
It's a once a year event. It's not like you're doing it every six months.
Not like it's in Hawaii.
After not having these things for a couple of years, it's even more important.
That's a good point. Absolutely. Okay.
You want to vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Make people.
They have. We could do emotions. A motion to approve the expenses of two staff attending the Massachusetts Library Association. Conference on May 23rd and 24th.
Okay, I make a motion to. Cover the expenses for the Massachusetts Library Association Conference for two staff members, May 23rd and 24th.
Is there a second?
A second and light soon.
Okay. The discussion. Second, no further discussion. We'll we'll vote Ronald Connor, I.
Reader, Rujia. And Mike said I.
Motion passes. Scheduling conflict with June 2nd meeting.
He has some.
Nice. Where at the high school?
No, um, her voice teacher.
Hasn't.
Yeah.
It's also a vicious fundraiser for the.
That's right. That's right.
So it's my wife's birthday.
Oh, we're all covered.
I think we can change it.
I can suggest that.
Is the nice. I'm getting my hair cut.
You want.
That'll actually be the day. No.
That we. Yeah, you're right. If that doesn't work out, it's just. Do you want to? I mean, we can. Like.
It's fine. There's a problem.
And so.
It's Bristol, 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 Plymouth. I was at the farm talking to Kenny. We ended to come in and get shitmates for sandwiches discussed nights are. School one day tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Any any other items on our agenda?
Um, the second page.
Oh.
I added, I forgot about it. Um, I apologize. The Clark Union has. Been conducting a week study and they've updated job descriptions for the union. I attached the library job descriptions. Um, three yard. And I looked in the trustee handbook to see. Like trustees are able to approve job descriptions. So I didn't know if you wanted that or not. Or just to be like, yeah, that sounds fine. I haven't had a chance to look them up yet. They were sent to me to go. But they took the old, the older job descriptions and did the study and then. They're trying to just make. All the positions of town. So consistency.
So do they change any of the specifications of position or just to bring?
I'm not agreed. They interviewed the staff to see how the job, what what might have changed. In practice from the original job description. But with the caveat that. What you're doing now in your temporary situation doesn't really apply. So the fact that we, you know, Brit is running from place to place to move materials around, even though. Britain's doing that, it's not reflective of. Normal. If you're all.
So I'm just wish on an average, she go every day, every other day.
Um, every day.
Does she get paid reimbursed because?
As what from what I understand. The contract is not specified in town. I know before my turn, that was a issue. For staff who would like do outreach in a school and. It wasn't. I don't know. It's changed. I've heard. Non-English staff and. I'm the one running around. And it's usually at the IRS. Yeah. So any out of town travels. Um, I'll look at that more closely.
I was about to ask when do it's important that you look at. You just got it. Should think it's necessary for us to look at it. You'll prove it.
I I mean, that's up to you. If you want to look at it and have any questions or something seems off. Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Upcoming programs, joint program with Conspondy.
Um, we're bringing in. Someone, if someone from Blue Cross and New Shield will be doing a presentation on. Medicare, Medicare, if you're in that. And we're going to hold it at the prime time building. I think it's on turn at 3 o'clock. We were, it'll be a hybrid presentation. Um, I was hoping to be able to record it and show it. And with cable and whatnot. And with cable and whatnot, but you were told that wasn't. So it's not the optimal time. People might need that information. I might have them back. In six months, I'll later turn to. Just because of you.
Right. Retired or make your medication.
Exactly. Yes, yeah, but we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do it in case someone is. Or needs the information.
Or somebody gets time off from work, this is important.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like. I really thought we could broadcast it.
Oh, I see.
And it's, it's not a sale, it's, it's informative. So I thought it was an opportunity to work with the council.
They give you different options.
Yeah.
That's so.
You get all of them on TV commercials.
I know. J.J. Walker.
Oh, God, please, no. It used to be, it used to be Nikki Rooney.
Sorry. Let's move on.
Let's move on. Lori is working on some other thing. The dogs are coming back. Okay, the dog show we had for fun. She's going to have that on Saturday.
Flying Bill.
The flying dogs, they were great.
Keen was on. Basketball shows, one of the basketball. That was on this winter. One of the local colleges, he, I caught the end of the fact.
No, it's, they were fantastic. And he had, last year, last summer, he had a little pup who was working on training, so we'll see. We have a cultural council grant programs that. Is a story to where he's going to. He has a program, things you would bring up. She has step animals. It's kind of like the Build a Bear sort of idea that she's going to do. If you pick out a certain animal, we'll have to hear a story about certain animals. I'm gonna, I need to nail down when salsa dancing is going to be. We're having salsa dancing. And improv, I want to do it too.
Oh, yes.
So we're. Trying to get it together.
I could. I was going to say, I saw the stepped animals yesterday. They're really nice. These aren't like.
Yeah, Lori was really happy.
And they have, I can't remember what they call these. These special stars or some kind of wish. Unlike the Build a Bear, we're used to put the heart, we were going to Build a Bear.
Yeah.
Put the heart inside this. Make a wish or whatever it is goes inside the animal and they're lovely and the kids stuff them and do everything themselves.
Yeah, Lori was really happy with the quality.
Right.
I feel like. I know.
I still have my step. Don't wait till we get off.
Does D R. still have the improv group they had many years ago? I remember we had. Yeah, we had them at the arts festival. Or the early arts festivals, we had a room rock group. There were, there was, but I, I think that all depended on.
Who was.
Like one person who was really good at it, led it and brought up people. When he graduated, I think the program went. I don't know that it was a fact, it's certainly faculty.
But anyone in journal, any kids participating in journal would be interested. I know. But she's taken that there are. That's one of them.
Okay. A motion to adjourn.
Reader, Rujia, let me make a motion to adjourn. A second, and lights in.
Okay. On favor of the motion to adjourn, Ron O'Connor, I.
Reader, Rujia, I.
And Mike Sen, I.
You can adjourn. Everyone, welcome in. Congratulations on completing your first trustee.
Thank you, it was painless.
The second one.